We're glad to have you with us tonight. There's a lot of people here and they'll stay with us for a little while and then they'll be leaving. So we appreciate the true parents, the true people bringing them here. If anyone wasn't here and anytime you'd like to come back to join us. Okay. Nancy, would you do a roll call?
We'll start off with our lead test. Ackerman.
Here.
Die.
Here.
Genema.
Here.
LePointe.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
White.
Here.
Salinger.
Here.
Okay. First is limited public comment, so at all meetings we start out with that. Right here.
Thank you. Hi. My name is Carol Crawford and I am the candidate for Grand Travis County Commissioner for District Six. And I'd like to take this opportunity to tell you a little about myself. I've lived in Acme for 11 years at 4755 Springfield Drive. For 10 of those years, I have been a stay-at-home mom to my two boys, who are 11 and 7. That's mine. I'm currently a staff accountant at the Traverse City Accounting Firm of Vernon Dable Loan, CPA PC. That's part-time. I also help deliver UPS packages at the Christmas season. So if you get a package on your door at Christmas, that's probably me, because I deliver out here in the city. I'm the treasurer of the Cortez Elementary PTO. I'm also on the finance committee at Christ the King Church over here. And I am on the district advisory committee for TCAPs and I've done that for the past two years. I have a Bachelor of Arts in Hospitality Business from Michigan State and a Bachelor of Science in Accounting from West Street University in Orlando, Florida. All those tell you who I am. I am not a politician. It's my goal to be a public servant to this community. Your agendas will become my agenda and your concerns are the concerns that I would take to the county commission. Like most of you, many of you, I'm going to live here the rest of my life. And it's in my best interest and your best interest that we work together to make our future safe and secure and prosperous and beautiful here. So that's all I have. Thanks for giving me a moment to introduce myself. If you have any questions or comments or concerns, I'm available. And I'll be at all the meetings I can possibly come to to listen to what's going on.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Did you have another hand back there?
Hey, folks. Jason Gilman. I'm also running for county commissioner. Jason Gilman, 933 MB East Bay Township, looking to represent the sixth district. I do believe in the strongest government is the government closest to the people and that is township government. So I would represent in that particular way. Other than that, I try to be a watchdog. I try to look out for the things where we overstep our bounds and hurt the folks. Anyhow, I don't want to take too much of your time. You've got a long agenda. I appreciate the ability to come here and spend some time with you. Thank you.
Anybody else? Do you have a minute of public comment at this time? Anybody? Seeing no hands, we will move on. Thank you. First item, next item is approval of agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? As presented.
Make the motion to approve the agenda.
He's important. Motion of white support by Paul?
Yes.
Scott? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Inquired any conflicts of interest on anything on our agenda tonight. There are none, seeing none? Hands? Thank you. We'll move on to consent calendar. Gordy, can I have you read that tonight fourth place?
Consent calendar. The purpose is to expedite business by reviewing non-controversial items together for one board motion. Roll call vote. Without discussion. The request to remove any item for discussion later in the agenda from any member of the board staff or public will be granted. One, receiver file. Treasurer's report as of 3/3/14. E, clerk's report and balance sheet. C, draft on approved minutes, meeting minutes of the planning commission of 4/14. Parks and Rec advisory, 4/24. Sherling advisory, 4/25. Also, the parks, number D is Parks and Rec's report from Tom Henkel. E, planning and zoning report. F, Metro Fire April newsletter. G, North Flight April report. Number two, actions that consider approval. A, Township Board special meeting minutes of 4/25 and 5/6. And B, current payable prepaid of $2,0998.60. And current to be approved of $58,045.79. Recommend approval, Kathy Die, clerk.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the board that wants anything to be moved in the consent calendar to discuss here? Gordy?
C, A, planning commission meeting notes, 4/14.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody?
Treasurer's report, A.
Anything else? Anybody from the audience, the public, that wants to add something to be discussed? Seeing no hands? Make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus the two items we remove for discussion.
I'll make that motion.
You don't have a second. Second. Motion, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, it's money. That's right. We have to do a roll call, we have to spend money.
Die.
Yes.
Genema.
Yes.
LePointe.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Salinger.
Yes.
Ackerman.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Items you're moving to consent calendar. First item was item C, four. Gordy?
That's the most recent Acme Township planning commission meeting. I normally don't read these in detail, but I did this one in that there's an ordinance that'll be, that was, came out of this meeting that will be discussed next. So I did go through it because I wasn't able to attend the meeting. So as I read, I read through it and it helped explain the ordinance that we'll be discussing later. But attached to that was a document submitted by a resident. It's man of a public record and I'd just like to comment on it. In the document, Ryan Kelly, who I applaud for taking the time to read the master plan and read the survey results. I would imagine with 4,500 people in Acme Township, not too many people can relate to that. However, there's a comment in here that I'd just like to correct since it is part of the public record. In it, Ryan's making the point, which he should, that the master plan and the survey results should tie together. And that the survey results say this is the direction the board should go and the actions should have, of course, tied between the two. And I fully agree and I've referenced that several times on different stances that I take. But in that, the comment was made that according to the survey, that there was the following were strongly opposed, strongly opposed by Acme residents in the survey. One, new Acme Town Hall. Two, new Acme Fire Station. Three, public water infrastructure. I went back to the survey and I was kind of surprised because I also did read the survey. If you look at the new fire station, 53.2% of the people in the survey said they would support a new fire station. So how we came to the conclusion that the residents were strongly opposed? New Township Hall, 46.5% said they would approve the new Township Hall. Again, not a majority, but certainly isn't strongly opposed. Public water infrastructure. Public water services, 51.4% approved that. So I think it's important that when we as the board members make comments and it's made a part of the public record, that you all should be looking at us and if we make errors, should correct us. Likewise, if something was submitted and well thought out, because this was not just an ad hoc statement, it should also reflect the facts. That's my own comment.
Okay, we need to then go ahead and approve that item removed.
Make the motion to accept.
Make a motion to accept it, yes. Well, I'll make a motion to accept it with the, with the comments. Thank you. Second?
I'll second that.
Any questions from anybody on the board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item A, we remove. Treasurer, Amy, if you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I just, because it's my first month doing the treasurer's report, Kathy and I work fairly closely together on this, just because I, and I changed the format. So the people that are watching this and they are comparing maybe last month to this month, you're going to see some differences. One thing that I am changing is as treasurer, I'm required to give the bank balances, not a registered balance or a balance sheet balance. So that's one thing that you'll see in here is that I'm balancing to the bank. If you were to look at our bank statements, you add them all up, that's exactly what's in our bank account. Kathy and I through the balance sheet know exactly what checks have not cleared. We agree on those checks that haven't cleared and that's where you reflect on the balance sheet. And so that's kind of where we come together. So in that format, and I don't know if anybody's doing this or not, if you were to look at February 28th, there's a little difference. If anybody really truly has questions on where that is, I can explain exactly where that money difference is. So I would tell you to either see me after the meeting or give me a call and I can tell you where those differences are. The other thing that I did, and this was actually trustee LePointe's recommendation, was to try to clarify it a little more and you may see an evolution change here over the time that I'm here because I'm trying to find easier ways, better ways of trying to get this information out so it's easier for everybody to look at, is to add a column that shows you what's being added together to give totals at the bottom. So you'll see my little A. This was a revised one that I had emailed out. You'll have column A, B, C, D, E, and F, and you'll see some formulas underneath that kind of just to give the total. That's just more clarification for anybody. The numbers did not change when I did this revised thing. So the totals were still the same, but I just added some formatting and clarification points for everybody.
Anybody who wants to look at a copy, it is, it is attached to our agenda. It will be attached later through the minutes. So you can look at the copy, what Amy was talking about, the phone, the phone on the website. It's available today as part of the matters.
That's it.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve item A, the treasurer's report.
Motion to.
Motion to LePointe?
I'll second.
I'll make that, doesn't matter. I'll make that motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Second.
All the other questions on the board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Sign. Thank you. We have no special presentations at this time. There'll be discussions for a lot of things later. Sheriff's report, office check. You want to just stand outside that column if it comes to other, the whole audience that don't see it?
This, use statistics for April, 15th. Acme Township had 277 calls for service. There were 18 criminal arrests, photos being drunk drivers. Forty citations were issued. And again, the car lawsuits that were going on last month and again the first two weeks of this month, all through Holly Hills and East Bay. Remind people to lock the cars, keep values out of sight. You have garage, utilize it. Because this is usual.
We appreciate that. This is like the third month we've had to remind people. It's very important. I left my house this morning and saw a neighbor across the street, car door wide open in the car, super front yard. I don't know whether, what happened and why, they could have gone out this morning, by the way, and went back and did something. But it's just the kind of thing that people look for and don't let yourself be a victim if you prevent this. Thank you. Next item is the county commissioners' report and he will not be here tonight. Do you have a minute? The next is the road commissioners' report and I'll just call the board. There was a road commission report laid out in funding gift that you was required to look at later. It's not even getting looked at now, but they combined this data. It's good that we get to see what's going on. So that's in front of everybody tonight. We got it late, so we just didn't try to shove it in the package. We do have a letter, I got it finally. Gordy mentioned it earlier. We do, we're going to talk about an ordinance tonight and so I am going to read this letter as correspondence now. It pertains to our, one of our first, second items in new business. But I thought it's important, when our citizens write us letters, we acknowledge that in public and allow the public to know what they have to say. So anyways, this is from a lady, Marianne White. She lives at 6173 Brackett Road, Williamsburg. All to Acme Township Board. I'm a registered voter in Acme Township and I've lived at my present address on Brackett Road for over 10 years. I'm very concerned about the article that appeared on the front page of Record Eagle on April 18th, 2014 regarding the possible use of Flintfield Horse Park on Main Road for concerts. I realize at the end a horse show brings a lot of revenue to the entire Grand Travis area and for that reason I put up with additional traffic, noise, and other interruptions for that four or five week period. However, I'm very upset with the possibility of this venue being approved for outdoor concerts. I find it very hard to believe that the owner, Karen Flint, or the promoter, Sam Porter, did not know they would need a special permit before attempting to book a concert. I believe that Mr. Porter has been involved in concerts in this area and he should know that prior approval and special use permits are required for each concert prior to booking the event. Playing the gum sounds like flimsy ploy to me. Make sure I'm reading the words right. It's how they, what they provide and not anything we're running. Brackett Road is a horrible condition. Many else would say that all of our roads have some horrible conditions in many places. And the county does a few patches at a time to fill in the holes that have been patched every year. Entire road needs resurfacing, but we all know that will never happen. When either M-72 or US-31 are set down for any reason, traffic is rerouted on this road. Large trucks use this road in the summer months to avoid traffic patterns on the two highways, even though this is supposed to be prohibited. While we have an emergency yet, to get emergency vehicles and, but I shouldn't answer that. I should just say that's what she's saying. I'm sorry. And horse shows like Hayats, the summer traffic for over a month from the horse trailers, deliveries, golf carts, for users to get back and forth from camping areas to the grounds. To the visitors attending certain events, are we to be expected to put up additional noise, traffic for outdoor concerts? If this concert is approved, the area is rezoned so that other concerts can be held to venue, where will it stop? Who else will apply to have concerts or whatever else on the property? And how will the board handle these requests? Who and what will receive approval or not? Or yeah? Are you ready for this? Finally, what you, what will this do to our property values that are just starting to climb a little bit right now? Who will want to buy property in this area? If there is an outdoor concert, venue close by. You will likely to make some sound decisions for the continual good growth of the Acme area, not for the sole benefit of one land. I do not believe approving the vinyl of a concert or any other concert would be wise. Decision for the board to make. Resilience should be out of the question. Unfortunately, I will not be at the meeting. This was received and was signed by Marianne White. 4/25/14. We want to make sure anybody is allowed to have their voice heard in our meetings, so I would let this out there. Thank you. Next item, we have no public hearing. We'll go to new business. We do want to announce tonight, we have a new trustee sitting amongst us that will be picked, sworn in, interviewed. And Jean, we welcome you to the board of Brackett Township and to represent the citizens of our township. So those that do not know that yet, tonight's our first public announcement of that. We're glad to have Jean. At the same time, Amy was picked as a trustee a few weeks ago or more now. Treasurer, I'm sorry, she wasn't trustee, I'm sorry, Amy. Treasurer, and that's also, we're glad to have Amy here. So that's why it's on the agenda so people know that. Anyone do you want to say, Jean?
No, thank you.
Okay. Put you right out there. Thank you. The next item is a discussion on Acme Township's special events ordinance. This is an issue that we look at in many places. We'll discuss it tonight. Thank you, boys. Good to have you. All of you and your families too. John, do you want to lead this off? You want Jeff? Well, Jeff, can you start with it?
Sure. Well, we'll talk about the legal side, I guess, about it. You know, the planning commission did recommend to the board, to the board they gave this. The special events ordinance is something that the township board looked at, I think in 2012. There was discussion about it at a number of meetings. I think, as I recall, it was referred to Parks and Rec, who then reviewed it in comparison to, I think, the Traverse City ordinance.
That's true.
And gave some comments. And then it kind of just came to a halt and it wasn't discussed again, it wasn't put on the agenda again. It's back here. I've provided a draft that I, I worked on with John and, and Mr. Supervisor and the chairperson of the planning commission. It is different than what was in the, you know, the previous iteration that the board had seen. But essentially what it does is allow for one-off special events anywhere in the township subject to an application and certain criteria. And then it creates a review committee that would, would receive the application, sure that it's complete, actually the zoning ministry was sure that it's complete, and would go to the review committee to make sure that all the elements, requirements are met, that there's nothing that needs to be added or changed. And then it's decided upon by the committee. The committee, it would be subject to the Open Meetings Act, so the public, you know, obviously the public would be invited and minutes would be kept. Details, requires 30 days before the event. It requires, you know, information concerning the event, like the days, the number of participants or workers, the numbers of attendees, the lots, authorities, the lot, it's not your lot, you know, the food, public safety, traffic. Requires evidence that it was either, you know, reviewed or approved by the local agencies that would have some jurisdiction or would be concerned or, you know, have interest in it, like Metro Fire, the sheriff's department.
Health department.
Health department, county codes if that was necessary. And then, you know, it has a, a matrix for minimum parcel size, which, you know, is something that I, you know, if you want to keep that in there, you, you want to look at to make sure you're comfortable with that based on the numbers. And, you know, I'm no expert as to how many people can fit on a parcel or what's totally appropriate. I think probably John and I have some more, you know, knowledge about that sort of thing. It require, you know, then there's a license, you know, to prove there's a license issued that's hung at the, the site, the, the person authorized to go review, be it the zoning administrator or someone else from the township, has the ability to go on site before, during, and after to ensure that the elements of the permit or the license are met. There are restrictions against a license being issued to someone who's had, been convicted of certain crimes or is in default or owes money to the township. Who has previously received a special events license, but it was revoked or there was a violation of that license for some reason. And it does have a, a limit of, in this document, of three events per property per calendar a year. So it wouldn't be something that someone could, you know, on a weekly basis have a special event, which would turn into basically a land use of the property. It's subject to the civil fractions ordinance. So that's sort of the short summary of it. I hope you had a chance to look at what was there.
Let me add a couple things here.
Sure.
One is the chart on its page, I guess you'd call it three maybe, on size. And one of the things that this helps us see is apartment, when you have a lot of people's parking, so it allows us to look at land size, so you have enough parking, so people aren't parking out in the street. You know, if a small location didn't have enough room for parking, you might not want to prove it because it's going to be a public nuisance that we're not where they should be. So it gives us some touch of that. The other thing we look at, East Bay has an ordinance, but it's very in-depth. It almost gets into things like reunions and a lot of other activities. Much broader, would you say?
It also, it also includes sort of a solicitor's license too, so going door-to-door selling things. And I, I think that if you're going to do something like that, you should have two separate ordinances. You shouldn't combine them two together.
Well, we did also, in front of you tonight is a, a copy of the actual fee schedule we laid in front of you and a special events license application. Those are just documents, the fee schedule would be part of the document. The application is for what we fill in if we have one to make, to make it work.
It also has a, a notice requirement to property within 300 feet of the application, the appkin to date of, for the event, short description and notice that the complete application would be available at the township hall. So, you know, those surrounding would, would be able to know about it, have notice of it ahead of time and be able to provide comment to that committee that would otherwise be decided.
As we've seen in paper, for those who read the paper, not everybody does, but there's a lot of, Peninsula is looking at this kind of thing. The city is looking to reduce, when they reduce, that movement goes elsewhere. That's a good opportunity, that could be a good opportunity. This gives us some ability to control. When we stopped this originally, we were concerned about a lot of things on the public parkland and what you could do there. So this, this will address all of those, I believe, appropriately.
Well, I think, I would recommend, I guess, if you want to have a separate one that's strictly for the parks.
Or just the park.
Because you may want to have some additional controls as to the park that you wouldn't otherwise have. Or maybe you want to have less, I don't know what you want to do, but I think it would be more appropriate to have a separate ordinance for the township-owned parcels.
It's probably true because of the DNR rules too, it's quite different there.
Yeah. And you know, originally the, the, the earlier iterations of this did have, did contemplate combining the township properties with this ordinance.
But, but you did have. John, anything else you'd like to add to this?
Virgins on.
Gordy?
I have a couple of questions. First of all, it's my understanding that the planning commission unanimously approved this and they spent time on it.
The concept, not the document, but they are in, they're in tune with what is being proposed here.
Yeah. You know, because this is a police power ordinance, so the planning commission doesn't have the authority to, you know, approve or recommend approval of this like a zoning ordinance, it's the township board. But they have, they are, they've been discussed and they thought that that was a good avenue to take. Maybe you do have a planning commissioner on your board that you can ask.
I'm here.
Oh, I didn't see you. Maybe I missed something.
I did see to that. Carly wants to, the planning commission's chair. When we visited this two meetings ago, we actually made a motion to recommend to the board consideration of a special events ordinance because it's not something that we can do and we didn't feel, and John and I concurred that it fits within, and there should be a letter in your packet that I drafted from us. Okay, good. Didn't feel that it fits somewhere in what the Ag Zoning, what we want to allow for a land use. It's more of a police power ordinance, so that's why you guys got it on your plate. But, but we do support it.
Maybe I missed something at that, Carly, because I don't remember that being brought up. In fact, last night, Matt was sitting right next to me and wondered what's happening up there, if you remember bringing that up. When we talked about it, we were going to bring it back, had a special meeting and it never, that meeting never happened.
Fieranga made a motion in that previous meeting and it was, I don't know who it was supported by, I thought it was Steve. To, to send onto the board a special events ordinance for review and it was unanimously supported. So that was off of our plate two meetings ago, which would have been the April four meeting. The special meeting, we were only looking at just the I love it concert, just for Flint Fields, to see if we would give them an S U P. That was for a major amendment, the S U P, and that was withdrawn.
Does that...
You made a comment that there's no limit, but I see a temporary means no longer than three days. The way I read that, and correct me if I'm wrong, that that means you're a special event can't be longer than three days in a row. It doesn't mean I can't, so that's where I'm saying, that, that's what that means legally. That means no more than three years in any given year.
No.
Okay.
You have to go to the back, yes.
Okay, because I read it and that's where I was like, I didn't see that.
Temporary, the event, any singular one-off event can't be more than three days. Temporary, the event, any singular one-off event can't be more than three days according to this draft. But then, no privately owned lot may have more than three special events in one calendar year.
And then the other thing that I just noted on here was proof that the applicant has notified owners of all property. So we're putting that on the person that's applying. The township is not going to send out those notices. The property owner is sending out those notices, is that correct?
Well, that's what the draft, I mean, that's if you approve that, yeah.
But I just want to make sure, and that's what everybody, so that's where.
That's what the draft was just saying.
Right. So that's where I'm thinking, that's going to be difficult for a property owner to do, names, addresses, that kind of thing. Just throwing it out there.
You could put, you could make or require the zoning administrator to do it.
Sure.
And perhaps then you'd look at upping the cost of the license fee if, you know, because that would require more work and the annual cost, which I don't, absolutely wouldn't be too much. But, you know, yeah, that's, there's no.
No, I know, that's why I'm just throwing those out there for two things that I just need to make sure that number.
Gordy, you had a comment there?
It says here that there will be a special events committee formed and they name all the participants. The zoning administrator, township board, designated planning commissioner, designated township, the township planner, one happy township, so a rather large committee. If something comes along, I mean, to convene a group of that many people going here, there, and everywhere, is that really realistic? You need a committee that big. It's just a question. I would pare it back, just try to streamline things through the process. Hopefully, more people who are on staff here eight hours a day, five days a week versus calling meetings, and we all know what that's like. So, I don't know what the time is, but you're asking for lead times, people get notice and they go through this whole thing. And I just think that might be good conversation, so many people participate. I would strongly recommend you take a.
Let's come back, we've got a couple quick questions here. Dr. Jean had a question.
Yes, someone educating me on how noise is measured. I recall reading that there was going to be a sound test at 2:00 in the afternoon on Friday, but if I recall that correctly, how is noise gauged as appropriate or too loud or, I know the city, that's where some questions are there. So how do you gauge that?
This doesn't have a, like a decibel or anything like that. It would be more, I guess, if you're asking me, I guess I would see it more that the committee or whoever it is is reviewing this would have some view of it and say, okay, no, you should turn the stage this way or you should do that. I mean, kind of that's what they do in the city, they turn the stage every year, so it bothers someone else, I guess. But you do have a noise ordinance, so the interplay with that, you know, presumably by receiving a license, you're going to be avoiding the requirements of the noise ordinance for the event if it's a concert. But that's something that maybe is important to think about. Is there, is there something else? I did look at the noise ordinance. The noise ordinance though, for your township, for the township, is, was done in 2005, I just pulled it off the website. And when that was done, there was a noise and junk ordinance, I think it was junk, that came from the prosecutor's office, county prosecutor, because the sheriff's department committed to enforcing both of those so long as they were, everyone adopted the same ordinance. So I assume that's still going on, their commitment is still. But this township did adopt the ordinance after some minor tweaks back and forth with the prosecutor in 2005. So there isn't, there isn't, there is a noise ordinance. However, your noise ordinance though does not, does not include decibels or anything like that. It has the sort of reasonable person standard.
Reasonable person, meaning just your ears, right? Somebody to go and listen in.
It says, "The Grand Traverse County Sheriff and his deputies are authorized, as local enforcement officers, by the following acts and activities which are declared to be noise disturbances and are prohibited. This enumeration shall not be deemed exclusive. Playing of any radio, television, phonograph, or other sound reproduction device or musical instrument in such a manner or at such a volume as to be sufficiently audible to unreasonably annoy or disturb the quiet comfort or repose of persons in the vicinity."
And they had a timeframe on it too, did it not? After X time.
Time of day, you were saying?
Right.
No.
I thought there was some restriction for time of day as well.
On the fireworks ordinance, there is.
Yeah. But not in your noise ordinance.
Not in the noise.
No. I think it, again, it's the sort of, your deputy sheriff who shows up will say, is this unreasonable considering the time, place, location, that sort of thing.
I read through this from a standpoint of easability or how easy this, I shouldn't say easy, is it reasonable, the steps we go through? And as I went through it, yeah, a person should be able to put this application through together pretty quickly. The only two stumbling blocks I see on there that could hold them up is one, convening this large group. And the second one is written evidence, I wouldn't know how it'd go without this, written evidence of the status of all approvals and reviews by Grand Traverse County Sheriff, Grand Traverse Metro, Grand Traverse Health Department, Mission Department of Transportation, Grand Traverse County Road Commission, Grand Traverse County Construction Code, and any other necessary agencies.
So that would be for us to look at that written evidence, so Metro would send us a letter, we approve this condition. Health Department would give us some documentation. So, okay. We do that on S U P, all kinds of things today.
I guess my, having never done, apply for these things, that's a simple thing a person can go down in a day's time with a reasonable amount of information, get something, I mean, because this is going to.
Depends on the size of the event.
Well, it doesn't, doesn't depend on the size of it, it just says, I don't know.
When I say that, I'm saying, if I'm having a small event of 25 people, I could probably go in there and present what I'm doing and walk out with a written letter from them, or they'll send me tons.
So turnaround.
If it's a bigger event, the metro would have to look at determining is the power of the right, I've got 220 enough amp reach, health department would look at facilities and restrooms, that takes a little longer.
Michigan Department of Transportation?
As from a standpoint of traffic and road conditions, if it's on a major road.
Land, traverse, highway, okay, I mean, it just seems.
These are normal things, I believe, John and Jeff, we do a lot of other things we do, if people come in an application, we look at.
For a one-off event? I can see if you're doing a construction project, building a building, you're running through this, but for a one-off event, this seems, again, this is not my area of expertise at all.
I give you another good example. If you have a certain sized tent, kind of tent, in Grand Traverse County, fire department can approve it. You go above that size of tent, code office has to approve it because of the structurally how it's built. So this is just the kind of thing you should get into when you do these things.
Most things have to be specified and inspected before the permit is okayed.
Certain things have to be inspected, but the application has to be signed off that, yeah, we're okay with this, we're okay with this.
Okay.
Can I clarify what?
Yes.
Okay. Those, we will issue a permit. If they've said yes, but they're not going to inspect those prior to, correct? Because you just asked, yeah. Did you get that? Because I thought you said, so we have to issue a license prior to them putting up a tent. So Grand Traverse Construction Code may say, yeah, you need an inspection, and they may have contacted them, but we have to give a license or they're not going to put up a tent. Do you get?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's a sequence of events.
Exactly.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes. Thank you.
Let's come back to the two questions around the table. Let's go to Amy's first. One is this notification. This is a, I wonder if we'll look at, we can make the changes as we go on. If you think the township ought to do that, and we do have the data, I mean, what's the board want to do with that? Amy, you have a good point.
I don't think it's bad requiring them to make the notification, but we need to provide them with the information. So maybe somehow in there, put the township will provide information of who's within the radius.
The listing of the property owner.
Right.
I mean, I just seem like that would be something that would be like, woo, right away.
I mean, at, you know, the township will provide the people within the, is it 300 yards?
Feet.
Of the event.
So we would provide it to the applicants.
Because I would think you could pull it out of the base and halfway easy.
Okay. Has anybody got a comment on that?
And just to clarify that again, because Doug said that.
That would be to the property line, not from the event, because if I got a 100 acre field and put it right in the center, I don't have to notify nobody.
Good point. Okay. Next item was the team size. You could, one thought, because it's five today, is make it, the zoning administrator would have to gather all the data, look at it, bring it in, make sure it's a package we could review, is have them, a planning commission designate, doesn't have to be the chair, can be, it could be just a designate.
I think that with the size limit, we might be comfortable with putting something like that in place. I mean, if it's going to be under 500 people, I would think we could have two or three people from the township in the appropriate approval. If it's going to be more than 500 people or more than 5,000, obviously we'd need a lot more people reviewing it.
That could be another one of the.
Maybe we need to, right now, put some limits on that along with, like Gordy mentioned, who needs to review it. A 500 person or less expectancy for an event, I would think, the zoning administrator and someone from the township making sure they got the right signatures.
I think you could even go up to 1,000.
I concur, 1,000. 1,000 people, the, one of the township officers, one of the township officers and a member of the planning commission and the zoning administrator.
Under 1,000.
Under 1,000.
What, do you want to make it over?
No, under.
No, I said when you go over 1,000.
Yeah.
What do you want to make?
I was going to say.
So I'm not saying.
Well, then you might want to get a little more into your planning people, your planners and that, I mean, because you're going to be able to look at your ordinance a lot closer and have that.
Yeah, because the planning chairman, how do you do that? Not that you do it, but you have it.
No, I understand the fact that it's cumbersome to have that many people, we talked about this, but having a couple more eyes look at it might.
Well, right now, it's.
Being more cautious, I guess.
Your paperwork, just reviewing the paperwork at this point, the ordinance is in place and either checked or no check, kind of. And I would think that between yourself or one of your, someone from the planning commission, the zoning administrator, and a board room, three people, my position would be, I trust you.
It is good to have at least two or three people looking at, no doubt about that. Because just of the documentation required, that you ask each other questions, we do just in some ways on other things now, but the difference in other things is because the planning commission is finally approved.
I would say, well, you want an odd number is always better than an even number, just in case you have.
I might say having two different numbers will get confusing because you'll be like, oh, well, we've got the three people for the special events and the, who are those other two that we throw in?
Well, that's, if you put it at a limit, period, anything over that, you need this, anything under, I mean, because I'm sorry, for a 500 or 1,000, I guess we decided or less, event to have the township planner look at it might seem a little unnecessary, but anything over 1,000, now you're getting into where there's going to be traffic issues and other issues that the planner can help us, well, maybe we need to put a detour here or some road signs there. So I'm thinking just adding the planner, the township planner.
Make the motion.
So for that section, I guess that's the change I would like to submit, is that for anything under 1,000 people, just the zoning administrator, township officer, review it and with someone from the planning commission, so three people look at that. Anything over 1,000, then you get in with the township planner as well.
Over, add the additional.
Correct. Over, anything over 1,000 people.
1,000.
Add the township planner. It makes it even if we want to, I could see adding the one citizen from the township, but.
The other suggestion would be to just put in language, the three people and then say, and consult the township planner as needed. I mean, you could have a 50-person event that's really weird that you need to talk to him about, and you could have a 5,000-person event that's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I would, can you give us an example?
Let's not go there.
I might want to go.
I don't like to say what is. But that would be one recommendation. I mean, we.
So for the planning commission, your recommendation would then be what?
To just have the same number of people on the committee at all times and we would just consult the planner.
Anything over 1,000, you will definitely consult with them.
Yeah.
And under 1,000 in some cases, but you'll have to on over. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I don't know how Jeff would weigh in, but professionally, I wouldn't want to be on a committee where I'm voting on anything on behalf of the township. I would advise or consult, but I don't, you wouldn't want your professional voting as a voting number.
Is that easy enough to fix? Jeff, do you understand more?
Well, I guess I'm a little confused, so.
Anything under 1,000, the three can just get together, discuss if it meets the requirements, they can move it to the next level. If it's over 1,000, they also have to consult with the.
Planning. I would say not consult, but have another thousand emails saying, I've looked at this.
A review.
Yeah, a written answer, not just, I told them.
Okay, and this may be silly question, but is it not that we can always call our planner on anything? Because we have a retainer anyway, so we could always say, if it's 10 people, we can call them up.
And I mean, my thoughts are similar. It's not saying we wouldn't on the others.
Be over.
So what happens if it's over 1,000? I'm not certain.
They're required to run it past the township planner.
And have a written.
And have a written response from them with recommendations if necessary to be filed.
A formal written review by the planner.
So, well, I guess I'm confused though. So is the only distinction be if it's over 1,000, that the planner has a formal written review? If it's under 1,000, it's still the same body and procedure?
The same three, they can still ask for it, but it's not required.
Okay.
Does that make sense now?
Yes, yes, okay.
Was there any other items if we, as we've read this, we can.
Temporary meaning no more than, no longer than three days. A three-day theme market, I can understand, a three-day garage sale, whatever sale, I can understand, a three-day concert or rock festival, that's a different story. That's going to have some substantial noise issues, traffic issues compared to a fall festival. So I don't know if that's what the intent was, putting it in there so the fall festival would have to come every day and get a thing every day.
Fall festivals.
Well, it might be two at most right now, but I mean.
Or one, falls under different ordinances.
Right.
It's a different ordinance.
So my concern is that three days is.
Is the fall festival a different ordinance?
I could speak to that. Under a minor amendment last night, we cleaned it up, the Acme Business Association Annual Fall Festival is allowed between the hours of seven and six?
Six.
Seven and six annually. So once a year, they can have a fall festival in perpetuity on the Flint Fields property between those hours.
Okay. Thank you.
That's handled.
You want to put some words in here or something Paul's asked, is there something or not? Gordy?
I can see his point, a three-day rock festival. But let's say you had a three-day, we have a three-day, only 50 people folk rock thing. People say, well, that's okay. So I would think it'd be up to the planners or the people on the committee to take a look at that. They have the ultimate discretion on some of these things. And if it comes up, it's going to be 5,000 people for three days, well, I'm asking, I assume they have a discretion to say, wait, that's a bit much, whereas. Well, I'm asking, I assume they have a discretion to say, wait, that's a bit much, whereas 50 people for three days.
Maybe, maybe you made the wording here like we did on how many people look at it, so if it's over a certain number of people, they could have, they could have it three days. Under a certain number of people, three days over, you would, that's another way to.
Well, and, and the reason I mention that is you can have up to three a year. So if you're talking a weekend rock festival and put in for one each day, and it gets approved, that's a different story. But to put in one for this weekend and one for that weekend and one for this weekend, now you're tying up nine days. That's where I think it could be an issue.
But, but doesn't the paper say up to three?
It does, the board's discretion. But you, you leave things open like that, and then you're gonna run into a lot of challenges of it. Hey, you allowed it for this person, why can't you allow it for that person?
Do you want any thoughts on that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
What is, what is our, what is our answer? Is Captain Worth.
Matter of fact, I just wanted to have one that way. Oh, yeah.
Just to say, you have, fill it in there, that's all. Do you have, do you have some thoughts?
Well, one of the suggestions was that perhaps instead of saying that there can be no more than three special events in one calendar year, that it would be that no property may have more than three days worth of special events in one calendar year, which would avoid the, the three, three day rock concerts, but then would, just so, you know, so you understand, would prohibit, uh, three, you know, three day yoga festivals, which would presumably be a little bit more quiet than.
The other part, the other part of this was that. You have to rely on the committee to review the application and determine the intensity, okay? And then, the other part of it is, is that with any ordinance, zoning or police power, you're gonna have to go through a trial period, and then you may have to tweak it, depending after you have some experience with how it's administered and what type of festival.
So you're really suggesting leave it as it is, let the group of reviewers.
Let the committee review the intensity.
And the planner, a big event special, to review that.
Because I, you know, I agree with, with Trustee Scott, is that if somebody comes in and says, I want to put in a three day rock concert, well, then you take a look at sales is going to be, you take a look at the trip generation is going to be, the impact, and the committee could say, this is way too intense, we're not going to allow it.
How are we at the board on that? Allows him to look at it. One of the benefits of police power ordinance is it's easier for us to make changes to this kind of ordinance than it is others.
Well, and, and the reason I brought that up was one of the questions I asked earlier about the, the noise ordinance. There is no timeframe. So if we approve a three day concert, and such, which could be done under this, they could go 72 hours straight because we've given them a special permit to do that.
Neither.
The committee could, is it in the ordinance, is it in the time? Because the committee could decide in time, the planning commission could.
That's, I just want to make sure some of these things are clear.
Yeah, I mean, well, you've got to, you've got to notify the, the committee or whoever is deciding what your event would be, and then it also has limitations, and so if it was determined, so. Look, look at Section 6, Sub C. And I, I think actually this should be changed anyway, because I had, the location of the special event does not negatively impact the public health, safety and welfare, including but not limited to traffic flow, parking, lighting, hours, signage and noise. But I don't, I think it's more than the location, so I think that the location of should be removed, so it just reads, the special event does not, and I think it should now, I actually should say, the special event does not unreasonably create a negative impact on the public health, safety and welfare, including but not limited to traffic flow, parking, lighting, hours, signage and noise. You've got discretion, and you've got the ability to say, this is too much. Um, you've got the things that you're gonna look at, the noise and the, and the parking and the lighting and the hours and the traffic and all sorts of things.
So, so we all know too, as a police power ordinance, for those that have not been through some of these, if we approve a police power ordinance, we publish in a paper, at the end of 30 days, it becomes, the ordinance is in place, that's the process. So it takes 30 days, somebody coming to us within that 30 days and said, I'd like to do something, we can start working with it, we just can't approve it. But that, that is the policy, the procedure that puts that in place. Any other questions? You have some corrections?
So with all the hoopla and the press on the Flint Fields proposed concert, will this give them the timeframe to meet the 30 day requirement?
They'll have to assess that. We, we're writing the ordinance because we have it with township.
I think, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, you're, you're not here to just address that.
I realize that.
But I think though, I think there would be plenty of time, because I think it's obvious.
Make a motion?
Yes.
If you're gonna make a motion on this, do you want me to read the changes that I've got written down for this?
There's only three.
Well, I've got lang, I actually have language that I've written, so it's.
Okay.
So you can actually, if you want to approve this, it's, it's language.
I'll, I'll make a motion, but his lips are gonna move.
Are you sure? You're giving me too much authority?
I can always append any of your comments.
I think it's.
All right.
Tell us where we're at.
Section 3, Roman numeral XVII. So. Trustee White said he wanted to make sure it was the property line, so starting proof that the applicant has notified owners of all property within 300 feet of the property line, upon which the applicant requests a license, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, to the end, adding the sentence, the township shall provide the names and addresses of those required to be provided notice. So then it's, the applicant comes and gets the list of who to provide notice to.
Yep.
Okay. Five, application review. So, the first sentence, I think, is okay. Second sentence, I think you wanted it to read, the special events committee shall be made up of the zoning administrator, comma, township board designate, comma, and a planning commission designate. And then, the last sentence, I believe, is okay, that all meetings of the special events committee shall subject to the meetings act. Adding this last sentence that says, events over 1,000 attendees shall require written review by the township plan. And then 6C is what I just said, the special event does not unreasonably create a negative impact on the public health, safety and welfare, including but not limited to traffic flow, parking, lighting, hours, signage and noise, so that, that last part says. Those, I believe, were the changes that you did. What language that I think is. At least I have a sign on it.
On the noise, should it be a decibel number? It's noise for one person.
Uh, you know, I.
It's different.
That's a, that's some, I mean, I don't have any expertise in what a decibel level is or should or shouldn't be.
I got no idea.
And I don't know that there's anything in this area.
There is.
That is all by law enforcement to test decibel levels.
To measure the approach.
To, to accurately say it's this loud. I could be wrong, but I don't know the risk.
Yeah, we had that once before that discussion, the planning commission, about, it's like one of you sporting plays behind the Hoxsey's place, I think it was on tribal land, and I remember Steve's talking about, the measurement people were putting was, the road, the road noise, but on 72, it'd be greater than that measure, which you do, but, but you would have to buy, there are instruments available, they're very expensive, you can buy them, but you'd have to have some way to do that.
There, there are, there are ordinances that, that have, that have the decibels listed. There are federal standards from HUD and EPA on residential, commercial, industrial, and noise standards. Here's the problem, is, is the enforcement, and it's sending a technician out there that does the readings, and I'll tell you from a practical point of view. If you send a technician out with a noise monitor, and at the same time you send the sheriff's deputy out, the sheriff's deputy is gonna get much, is gonna, is gonna be able to resolve the issue very quickly, more than a technician with a noise monitor. So if somebody's got a problem with noise, they contact, they contact the sheriff, sheriff thinks it's too loud, that's just, that's what you called it, that's the.
Reasonable person.
Yeah, reasonable person standard, is that the sheriff's deputy then would say, turn it down, and you, nine times out of 10, there's complaints. What I've, what I've seen, but it's very hard to enforce it with, with the meter.
I, I will say. This is a new ordinance, that, you know, with everything that you do, sometimes it requires tweaks, if it doesn't seem to be working. You're not creating a vested right in anybody, you could, at your next meeting, assuming you approve this, at your next meeting, you could rescind it. You could amend it, you could change it, so. And that's maybe important to keep in mind too, if it does seem like there's a decibel or some, some other way to look at it or requirement, then you, you know, you could, you could tweak it.
We can always come back and review it after years.
Absolutely.
We can review it after 30 days.
30 days, whatever you want, yeah.
Immediately after this first one.
Okay. Any other, otherwise I'll look for a motion?
There was a motion.
Oh, your, your motion, what he said.
Wait for a second.
Do I have a second?
Right here. Second.
And then the discussion? Uh, let's do a roll call on this, please.
White?
Yes.
Scott?
Yeah.
White?
Yes.
Salinger?
Yes.
Ackerman?
Yes.
Dai?
Yes.
Genema?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. We'll make sure the corrections are out and be ready in a minute. The next item is, the road commission comes to us many times and says, would you like your roads brined, gravel roads? I'll provide you a document, it's issued at $1,508.63 for one time. Attached to their document is the list of the roads in our township and where they come and go, it's pretty much the same history for two previous years. We can put this in our budget, and therefore it can be covered in our budget, we did that last year. I don't suggest personally two times, some people that live on these roads might like it more than that, but I think it's reasonable. So, what's the board's wish?
Just one, one thing, Jake.
Okay.
Can we add a part of, of falling road? Just about at our township line, it is on our side, because they drove down there, and the signs there, that road is terrible there. They put barrels in the center of the road, and said, there you go.
It's gone.
Yeah, are they gone now?
Yeah, no, no, the road's gone.
Oh, yeah, it's gone.
I actually asked them to put signs up, because it's so, in my feeling, it's so dangerous at night if somebody was driving it out through there.
Oh, I seen somebody fly down through it with a car and I thought.
I think we can ask them, but they don't.
They've got to, they've got to do something to that, grabber or something.
They've got to fix it.
And, and when I, when the person that I talked to, talked to the county, what they told him and me is you better talk to your township board. So I got my ear chewed out from Long Petal Mine.
But when you mentioned the light check, and I talked to Toby, and I talked to Jim Johnson, the engineer, about it.
So hopefully they, they do do something there, it's not, like I say, it's nothing else, put some gravel in there.
Okay. And now, what's the board's wish on that?
Orange barrels isn't going to.
No, it's been stopped, and that affects it by, it doesn't.
So the 1508.63 is our cost?
That's what we pay.
That would be our cost?
Yeah, that's about what we paid last.
About what, how, how close is it within?
About $100.
Within $100? So I'd make the motion to approve the brining of the roads as listed, estimated grant total of $1,508.63.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
And they asked if they'd look at the road, Doc, about.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Oh, aye, aye. You're right.
I'm sorry.
Scott?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Salinger?
Yes.
Ackerman?
Yes.
Dai?
Yes.
Genema?
Yes.
Yep.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. The next item is, is support for tribal grants. We have, in front of us, there are various groups that would like to go for tribal grants, and I'll give you some dollars to put on this. Uh, and, and we have one company that might want to talk about their grant. We're doing it this way, they haven't provided all the data yet, because it takes some time to do it, but we have some dollar figures, which gives us a little bit of guide about what that is. And we can add to this once I go through the first part.
Are you gonna ask us for a decision to approve it, without having actually seen that?
No, what, what I'm gonna suggest, if we're gonna do it besides a zoning, we don't want it, or we want to add to it.
Okay.
We have up to our next meeting again, because it doesn't have to be until the end of June.
So the plan would be, they'd come back with their, those who, kind of give, go ahead, final, and we'll make the final decision in June.
I just like to get it early, because we always wait till the last moment, and that's a change. Before we see, I'm, I'm not gonna talk about Bayside just yet, Yuba School was asked for, I believe, it's 15K, Bob is here, if we have any questions. We're looking at Acme Water, some more money for re, the engineering of a water system to go to our commercial area, not for residential, we're not going to get good people's well, we want to have it along the front of 31 and, in some of that commercial area, and we, we apply for another 50K to add to what we've done now, so we can finish up that engineering. And Sailor Park Boat Launch, if you remember, had, had a shortfall on the original proposal, we applied for their grant. I think that shortfall, Gene, was around 39. And what are they asking it now for? Same thing, right? 39.5, Gene's buying, kind of been leading that effort. Marcy?
Bayside.
Bayside Park, you want to just give what you got on that?
So Scott and I had a meeting yesterday, and we looked at things that could be, that would be conspicuous improvements, that were going to cost us a hundred thousand dollars. And we came up with a couple things, and I would like to present you first with what I believe would be one of the most important things that we could create started in our park, and that would be parking lot improvements. Um, we looked at, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I thought we had a plan over here, but we don't. But what it covers is it would repave our original parking lot with sealer and asphalt, and then it would add over here to the left, going, I guess it would be west. It will add about another 30 spaces, and it will start the roundabout, but it leaves all of the restrooms as they are, and that would just be something that would get us started with parking lot improvements, and it would be like our phase one, and Steve priced that out at $22,134. And then he also looked at asphalt trails, I think on the map that, when you guys did the design, they actually did them in concrete or cement, and he looked at the cement price, and it was like 86,000, and so he priced it out for us as asphalt paths, and it would be all of the paths starting in the new areas of the park and going around to create that inlet park path trail system. And at asphalt price, we could do it for $46,212, so.
I thought it was some sort of matting that you were talking about looking at as well.
That's mobile mat.
Right.
And that would actually be. And that would actually be something that would go over the beach area down here.
Just in the beach area is what you were looking at?
Yeah, just in the beach area.
Okay. I just knew I heard you talking about that.
Yeah, that is for ADA compliant access for the beach, and I believe it's just down in this one section so they can get to it.
Just for the kind of corner to get to.
Right. And I don't think that was included in the price, but I can look into that. But that was a couple thousand dollars.
I'd like to take a break. Our recorder's batteries just went...
Okay.
Ready, and I would like to get that back running until we can catch up. Let's just take about a three minute, if you want to get up quick.
Parking lot is like three hundred and some thousand dollars. But by just resurfacing the existing lot and then doing that cutout of the roundabout, that would be our phase one. And he made sure that there would be, I forget, he called it some sort of piping that would go underneath the new part of the driveway and the parking lot so that we could incorporate electric for anything or irrigation or any of that without having to have the cost right now.
Put it in, put it in while we do it so we can then feed things down through that.
Exactly. And build upon it. So it would be our base.
So you're requesting, the first would be the...
No. The first would be the twenty-two thousand one hundred and thirty-four.
The pathways?
No, that's for the parking lot.
Oh, the parking lot, I'm sorry, yes, yes.
We feel as a committee that the parking lot's important because it would, A, increase people's ability to park there as it gets more crowded, but also the parking lot kind of serves in the roundabout as the base starting point for the trail system, which could then be the pavilion, the play area, new restrooms, whichever way the township wants to develop it next. But the parking lot being redone at the same time that M dot is redoing the roads out front because they're going to be doing their curb cuts and changing that anyways, we thought it would be the most linear process to get things started within the park. And then if the township wanted to support also the beginning of the trail system with the asphalt trails, we could keep it, the cost down a little bit and still give something else to the people to use within the park.
And how much was that, the second one?
The second one was forty-six thousand two hundred and twelve dollars. The total cost is eighty-eight thousand three hundred and forty-six for both of those.
What Marcy, to me, says makes sense because when you build the trail system and then go have to tear a piece of it out to put a parking lot in, it's kind of lost, sunk, sunk investment. So you got to do the first piece right. It leads to many other things, new bat houses and all kinds of things. So when you do it right, you have the pipe in, you bring electric lines buried instead of overhead and all kinds of other utility structures, it's there.
Right.
What was the total?
Sorry.
The total was eighty-eight thousand three forty-six? Tell me if I did my math right.
I got sixty-nine three forty-six.
All right, wow.
Where's the extra money going, Marcy?
Well, I decided we're going to have a large party.
I was going to ask you, I was going to ask you, did you...
Load yourself a bike, right?
That's right. Maybe we're going to have a concert there.
So...
Three day event.
Right.
So any other, this is...
But a picnic only.
This is ballpark at this time, do you put the pen to paper, but this is...
What do you, no, okay.
Let the lady go first, she's always...
The one thing, though, too, about going to the tribe for the grant for parking lots, when we talked about the DNR grant, I know when Megan talked about it, the DNR grants do not like to give money for parking lots.
Right.
And so to try and find alternative sources for the parking lots may be in our best interest anyway because they don't rate high, if I'm right, is that correct?
They're not very good.
No. So it seems like that's a good avenue to start with, in my opinion.
I have sixty-eight three forty-six, that's a few dollars.
Sixty-nine.
I had sixty-nine. We take forty-six two twelve and twenty-two one thirty-four.
I think we just all stopped doing math now.
Twenty-three one thirty-four.
Four of the numbers, twenty-two one thirty-four and forty-six twelve, or two hundred and twelve. Sixty-eight thousand three hundred and forty-eight, or forty-six.
Six.
Oh, so I just shy of seventy K. That's right.
So that's, that's bad opportunism.
Right.
Gordy?
One question, I think it's been discussed back there. When do they make the decision? We submit these in June, when do they make the decision and when do we get the money? Or when does somebody get the money?
Probably won't, we probably won't get it until middle. Is that right, Donna?
Yes, takes about six weeks after it's submitted.
Okay. And when they pay it, they actually, we've gone to celebrate, they actually had you a check, you bring it in, you put it in the bank.
So...
I mean, it's that quick, it's not like seventeen.
Okay, so you would know the end of June, but you don't get the money for six weeks. Well, I guess the question, the question is, if, if we were fortunate enough to get one of these grants, would any of this happen yet this season?
I think that depends on how fast we could look at getting the engineering done and moving forward on that. But I think we could at least have the survey and maybe some of the ground work so that as soon as the frost freeze lifts, we could start in spring.
It would seem like we wouldn't want to do the parking lot during the high summer season. So I'm thinking if the grant goes in the end of June, we hear six weeks later, and then maybe go ahead in September or something, and it snows, what, the last week of September then?
Well, Marcy and I talked about, we have some rubbing of the bed and the overhead, the overburden. You might be able to go in and get some of that out of there, out of the way, and then in the spring, start in the real meaty construction. And so you might have a month and a half if somebody could come in here and get some dirt out of the way that you don't need, get some gravel in you do need, get it started that sit over the winter and then...
And move all the plants that we want to save and relocate to something else.
The last one is, I mentioned it a little bit and I've talked to some people, it's not on this list of the grant requests that we're considering. The one that we are working on right now is putting together a grant request for road And we'll have it ready to submit for the board and the entire packet at the June meeting. And again, I go, go back to the survey, the biggest item on the survey in the township amongst the residents in terms of the issue was roads, overwhelming majority versus anything else. So I think we focused a lot on the basin, on the shoreline, which we should, and parks and et cetera, et cetera, but that certainly is a huge issue. It farce strips anything else in terms of people's concerns, in terms of what their desires are and what they see the current environment to be. The gap is huge, so probably the way it'll be structured, to try to accommodate what the tribe looks at, will look at saying, okay, we've got a road fund, we want money for the Acme Township Road Fund to support SAD, Special Assessment Districts. That will have some matching money, money from the state via the Metro Act, will have hopefully some matching money from the township and matching money from the road commission. So it's a, and obviously the biggest piece that the residents will pay for. But I think we've got to sit down with the rest of these and come up with how much we're going to ask, how much we want to ask for at practice. So, but I'm guessing, no, I don't want to get off the lead.
By doing that, it takes it out of any one neighborhood, gives us flexibility and, because there are other places, this Harley Road issue we talked about, the road commission might come and say to us, hey, if you could give us five thousand dollars, we can do that right now better than we could two years from now, and you have to suffer, okay? We have some of those kinds of things, we can, we can have a SAD on the north side if somebody wants to put it up here, we could have one someplace else. So it gives us flexibility in how we look at that. Okay? Anything else on that? Anything else on these issues from the board? Donna, you have anything else you want to say on yours?
No.
Just tell, what's it basically for, so we, you told me, but I want to make sure you...
We are, we're all set with the plumbing and heating. We just got a grant from Beaderman to finish paying for that, and so the next big issue we have is a new roof, which is roughly, we've got three quotes and roughly in the twenty thousand dollar range. So if we can request fifteen from the tribe, typically they've not given us exactly what we asked for, but anything towards that would be wonderful.
Okay. Anything else on these? Otherwise, we'll move on. Next point is, next item is purchasing for closed properties. There's a list in the package, the two properties that, that we could do this with are both in Lock and Heath, they have tax dollars associated with them, they're past due, this is, we get this every year from the county treasurer, do you want to buy these properties or do you want to pass on these properties? And so I bring it to the board because I think we should make those decisions, not any one person. My suggestion would be we pass, but that's up to the board.
I would agree with you.
Second to that motion.
My motion wasn't that you passed. Forty seconds, that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Should we do a roll call since it's not, but involving money? I mean...
You can't be all in.
Do a roll call, huh?
Yeah.
Scott?
No. Or I mean, yes. Supporting, I don't stand.
White?
No, that's a good...
Yes.
Salinger?
Yes.
Ackerman?
Yes.
Dai?
Yes.
Genema?
Yes.
Repoint.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next, I've got, I've got a handout for everybody. The next item is discuss, discussion on use, I'm sorry, it's after next time, I was jumping on, I'm sorry. Ordinance amendments. We have two ordinance amendments in front of us tonight, and I'll get to this. One is amendment number thirty-two before material processing and warehouse district, the other's amendment number thirty agriculture. John is going to walk us through that a little bit. Do it, please.
I can start with, excuse me, amendment number thirty-two, which is the B four district. This district is, this is a reorganization of the existing B four. The planning commission, about six months ago, and the board, eventually came to the board, we made, they made some modifications to the B four regarding that five hundred foot setback off of seventy-two. And we pretty much removed that setback and just reorganized some of the uses, basically anything that had outdoor storage would have to be located five hundred feet away from the M seventy-two. But then we started getting into it in a little bit more detail and the material warehousing, processing warehousing district really had a variety of different uses that some of them are no longer even around anymore, okay? Like data processing, for example. So what we did is, we suggested, the planning commission worked on this for three or four months, they grouped the uses primarily by the construction code, okay? For example, under the, under the code, in terms of occupancy uses, you have a bundle of uses that are processing and distribution facilities. You have ones, you have use, a set of uses where storage or the operations are conducted totally within an enclosed building. You have high-tech uses and then you have quasi-public and quasi-public uses, which are usually centered around like medical laboratories, which are either on privately or in conjunction with a hospital, or a lot of essential public service buildings, which are your gas regulator stations, your telephone exchanges, your storage yards, you know, those type of uses. And then we added into the district because of its location and because it is a B four district, we added retail establishments with less than thirty thousand square feet of building area, which could be used for things like lumber stores, hardware stores in that area, wholesale stores. And we also included garden centers and nurseries and automotive and farm equipment establishments. And then we, most of the uses in current ordinance are only allowed by special use permit. All the uses I just talked about are, are uses by right. So that expedites the review process, somebody that wants to use the property. And then we have just a few uses that are required in special permit now, and those are ones that are more intensive, like a dry cleaning plant, contractors' yards where they have outdoor storage, lumber and planing mills, and we also included in their private or nonprofit indoor and outdoor rec facilities, which is currently in the B four, so we didn't take that out. And then retail establishments where the square footage of the enclosed outdoor sales yard is actually larger than the building. And you may have that with a nursery where they have a small building and they have a large outdoor nursery yard, so that would be a special use permit. So it kind of rounds out some of the uses that could take place in the B four district, which is at the extreme eastern portion of the township along M seventy-two and Arnold Road over there. So that's how we rounded it out. So that, that's the B four district.
Any questions of John on the B four district? Amy?
Just a clarification. Currently, we don't allow retail establishments in that district, correct?
Correct.
And so now we're going to allow thirty thousand square feet, which is basically a hundred by three hundred for retail?
Right.
Is that correct?
Correct.
When we're trying to encourage the warehousing?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And how did they, you come up with the thirty thousand, just out of curiosity?
Thirty thousand, when you take, when you take a look through the literature in terms of building sizes for commercial buildings, thirty, thirty to fifty thousand is the breaking point where they move into what they prefer the smaller, big boxes. So the thirty thousand is, is kind of the...
Because that's what I was thinking, it's like, okay, so are we going to have these big boxes?
No.
Nope, so that's still under what they tend to do?
Yeah.
Okay. And then just on that, under E two, we talk about hardware and home improvement stores, et cetera, building lumber supply stores, and it talks with enclosed outdoor sales yards, okay? So out there, so is that the difference between six point one zero point four B, where it talks about, what's the difference between B and E one? Because it seems like the same thing, contractors establishment with outdoor storage for materials and equipment, why is that a special use and the others not?
Because they're, they're not, they don't have to be enclosed in a facility.
That's, that's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure that that means that that...
Any other question?
Just, John, if you could educate me on something, when I was looking at the community survey, it talked about warehousing and distribution facilities, low priority, it had the highest in the column of forty-four point three percent. What the community survey is addressing is much larger than thirty thousand?
Uses a lot of the entire seventy-two corridor.
Okay. Okay. And, and that kind of warehousing is much larger, is what I'm hearing.
Yes. The question I think that we asked in the survey is, what type of uses would you want to see?
As a priority for development.
As a priority for development, yeah. And that was a low priority for development, but you still need an area in the township, and it's been pretty successful. It's a nice little warehousing and light industrial district out there.
And this is smaller?
Smaller.
Thirty thousand is much smaller.
Yeah, and we're not, we're not changing the zoning of the district, this is just a change in uses in the area, but the geographic area of the B four is not increasing at all, it stays the same.
Thank you.
How does this, John, affect the M seventy-two corridor plan, which we only have some small areas that that covers, I believe?
It does.
It fits into it, okay?
It fits into it, fine, yeah.
Okay.
Because you're talking, you're talking at that point, it's curb cut, curb cut access and with, in the number of curb cuts that you're...
The other thing is our corridor plan, if I remember, some people think it starts at this corner and goes all the way up.
It only goes...
It doesn't, it's just, it's kind of a spot kind of thing, the way I remember it.
It does, I think it's between, basically it's, it's Yuma Creek to Act, I mean, it's not even really in the B four district, it doesn't, it's not as far out.
Okay. Any other question? Gordy, you have a question? Just a general question.
And I don't know this stuff, so. But you have the uses by right and uses by special use permit. How do you, how do you assign me, you're parsing out, this goes in this pile and that goes in that pile? Is there a, what drives one in one direction versus the other direction?
Typically, it's, one of the criteria is taking a look at intensity. The other part is how the properties are used. And the ones by special use, those are where, those will be properties that have like outdoor storage that's not screened. Okay, like a contractor's yard where they may have some of their construction material and things along those lines. Those require special use permit only because you want the planning commission to be able to take a look at the site plan and take a look at how they're laying it out and get the input. Because under S U P, you have notification of the adjacent property owners. So they have an opportunity to take a look at what's going on too.
Okay, so it's just a little more rigid.
It's a little bit more rigid. Permitted use by right would only require a site plan review by the planning commission. And that's just one meeting and it's not subject to a public hearing.
Then, and look at this, when you're sitting there trying to list, you know, what are these things we can do by right? And you're, you know, just coming up with a list. And I'm just using this as an example. For example, you list on there soda water and soft fruit bottoming facilities.
Those are in the, those are in the occupational code under, under processing and distribution facilities.
So if somebody came up and said.
Yes, the federal government does.
I want to do not soda water or soft, but I want to do fruit juice. I mean, do that, do you have to then go to the other column? Or is this kind of some discretionary?
Discretionary.
Okay. I have a question. Any other questions?
But good points.
Anybody? The planning commission has looked at this. I believe they recommend that we. Planning commission has, and went to the county planning commission. County planning commission recommends we approve it. So I think we'd look for a motion on this particular one to approve. Motion to approve. New, I guess, B four district material processing warehousing district ordinance? Amendment number two. Motion by Lapoy. Report by White. Any other questions? Anybody? With money, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go, same time. Next item.
Next item is the ordinance number thirty, which is the rewrite of the A one Act district. This is a little bit more of an expensive process by the planning commission. I think we worked, the planning commission worked probably about a year on this. And it involved a committee of several planning commissioners plus representatives from the farming community that attended the workshop sessions on it as we put it together. This was, I guess, the best way to explain it to the, to the board. This is really how a zoning ordinance needs to be written. It's kind of bottoms up. We basically bring the stakeholders in that are going to be affected by it. And we have done, worked through it, answered questions, asked questions as we, as we developed this. I will tell you that this is a little bit more, this is more far-reaching than what we currently have in here. Because what it does is it incorporates uses that are currently being suggested as part of food innovation districts. Okay? And it includes value-added agriculture in it as well. So it, it's, it's a little bit broader. It also includes a few things that I think you need to be aware of. Rather than try to come up with regulations regarding the management or the operation or the establishment of like things like wineries, the committee decided to fall back on the definitions that are currently in the Michigan Liquor Control Commission in terms of their regulations and what they define and how they regulate small wine makers. Small distilleries would be allowed as well as microbrewers. And the other part of this is the, we included, as I had mentioned, uses such as production facilities for value-added farm products, such as baked goods, jams and jellies. Those are currently not in your ordinance. We allow warehousing facilities that are part of an agricultural operation in the Act district as well as things like cold processing and food storage, bulk food storage opportunities. A lot of these are permitted by right. They're not special use approved. Again, anytime that the planning commission has been involved in looking at the ordinance, they are trying to push as many uses as they can into the permitted by right in order to make it much more expeditious for the applicant and for the township to review these things in the process administratively.
John, when you talk about the, did this, does this replace our old existing winery?
Yes, it does.
Which makes it better for the people who want to be in that district.
And I think we use the bribe, I mean, this, Carly's here, and so is Marcy and Doug. And they'll tell you that, you know, we went back and forth on a lot of this relative to acreage size. But one of the things I thought was kind of unique with this, and hopefully it will be used by other communities in this area, is the conditions that the planning commission came up with where they require at least five percent of the fruits that are going to be in the product, in the, from Acton Township. And seventy-five percent of them be grown in the state of Michigan. So this is kind of like a locally, locally grown ordinance to bring in local fruits that are developed here, are grown here, plus at least seventy-five percent have to come from the state of Michigan. So you're not going to end up with facilities that are buying products from outside the state and bringing them here to process. These are really products that are, that are grown here in the state of Michigan in Acton Township. So I thought that was pretty unique. And I have to compliment the planning, which we went back and forth. We actually did surveys on this to get to these percentages. So they, they worked pretty, pretty well, pretty hard at it. This, this ordinance was also, went through public, public hearing and was then referred over to the county for their review. And the county planning commission had a couple of minor tweaks on this, but recommended approval as well.
Let me ask you, Doug, since you're, you're part of this, what do you think about it?
Well, like John said, I mean, we hashed it over back and forth quite a bit. And it's sort of like everything. You're not going to like it all, but the whole.
Better way.
Yeah, I think it's very good. There's a lot of discussion on the winery and the distillery deal is one of the biggest.
Yeah. Most discussed.
That was the most discussed, I think, on that. And after it's all said and done, I guess, I have, I still have to say I'm satisfied.
For all, anything from the chairman's position?
No, I think, I think Doug's opinion actually weighs more heavily than mine because he's in the Act district. So I would lean to what he said. I think it's a good piece of work. It cleans it up. We have a very cumbersome zoning ordinance, as John and Jeff would most likely tell you. So we're trying to go through piece by piece and start working on cleaning it up.
I think for me, the positive was the farmers and the community people came in group time after time to talk about it. And were really opening up with each other and reviewing it and having some great discussion, which gave us some more thoughts to put in this. We all were committed for doing that and following that kind of process. Any questions in the board? Gene?
When you look at Acton compared to other townships in the region, this sounds like it was really a good group of work to get to this. Does it give us a competitive edge?
Gives you, I think it gives you phenomenal competitive edge.
So people are going to.
I have to tell you, I, you've got such a wonderful asset in terms of all the agriculture up here and the diversity of it. I'm, I'm just, I'm very surprised at how over-regulated agriculture is in all the various townships. I mean, to the point where in one township, somebody wanted to produce cheese and they created a whole zoning ordinance to manage it. And it was like. Yeah, yeah. I think it gives, I think it gives, I think it gives the township, I'm hoping, I know that the county was, some of the planning, the county planning commissioners, I had, had occasion to bump into them outside of their meetings. And they complimented the township planning commission here on the comprehensiveness of this and trying to integrate some of the new food innovation concepts into, into the ordinance. So hopefully it'll, it'll make its way around the county and the Leilunaw County as well in terms of how to open this up a little bit.
Any other questions for the board or John?
Thank you.
Amy has a question.
Sorry, just have. It's D twelve, where we talk about the gift shops. And I know it has to complement the agricultural activity. In the old ordinance, we restricted it by twenty-five percent for the gift shops, for the sales of non-agriculally related products such as antiques or crafts.
Yep.
So now we're not having any restriction on that.
No, in fact, there was, it's least restrictive. And there was no way in your old ordinance that you were ever going to enforce it because your old ordinance said that the township had the right to go in and audit their books.
It did.
And so the thought process there, though, even allowing the gift shops that, because, see, gift shops tends to, I think a gift shop, I guess, that's, that's maybe my struggle, that I need to think of gift shops as something different than, than what I think of a gift shop. So this, so how would we regulate that from a gift shop coming in? Even though I'm Doug White and I am a farm and I've got a farm operation going on and I want to open a gift shop that sells T-shirts, sells whatever, does it have to be tied to Doug White Farms? In that case?
The way this is structured is these are value-added.
Sure.
They're tied to the agricultural operation.
So that would be for our zoning administrator and site plan review committee that would say, okay.
Put apples on your gifts.
So, okay.
And I'm going to go in there and sell a lake.
No, I, sure. You just better say Doug White's farm on the tractor. White Farms or whatever.
Any other questions? Otherwise, the board.
Appropriate? Okay, all set.
Anybody?
Thank you.
I'll make the motion.
A second?
Thirty. By seconds? Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go, same time. Thank you, thank you, John. You didn't jump out. Appreciate that. Carly, your team, and all the people that are here did a good job. Next item, I'm going to, this is where I have this little handout. We did, we did some work a year ago or so, not quite a year, on allocations of township funds. So I'm going to hand this out and then Gordy's going to talk about it. But we have had done some allocation. I have updated this from back time as a possible resolution that we can use to talk from. So. And then Gordy, I think this was one you wanted to talk about, so we'll let you start once you get that. You need one? But anyway, so this shows all, kind of all our funds, what we had, remember? And we, and how much we had in the funds. This can be, I have modified this, Gordy, to show the water engineering study that we said we wanted to put in this fund and put a place for engineering projects as an example. But this hasn't been approved yet. This is just a, you know, a start.
But you're not asking us to approve this?
No, this is just so you can, as you talk about this issue, it gives you some idea what it is.
Okay, I mentioned at the last special meeting, Paul wasn't there. It wasn't a discussion point, so we weren't violating any Open Meetings Act, anything you just, you just talked about. It was saying that, basically, we're sitting on a fair amount of cash drawn, less than one percent interest in the bank. And I think it'd be put to better use by funding various projects within the township. Real value services, whatever, to the residents versus just sitting on it. And I guess the one, two funds in particular, one is we've got three hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars or more than six months' worth of expenses sitting, committed, locked up, cannot touch it. Just in case, in case money, sitting there will, it's left there, it'll just sit there, never be used. And I can see in a, some businesses where you don't know what your revenue is going to be. It's very unpredictable that you have to sit on a large pile of cash perhaps. But if you look at the revenue, in my opinion, you look at the revenue of the township, it comes from four sources. And they're pretty darn predictable. They'll vary and you get a heads up and you go up or down by a percent or two. So I think we're, in my opinion, not using the money in the best way possible. So I'm, I don't know if we want to do this, go into more detail when we get into the budget, which might be the more appropriate time. But the three hundred eighty-eight thousand, which is, I don't know, six and a half months' worth of cash just locked up for no value, maybe bring that back down to four months or free up fifty thousand, a hundred thousand dollars of that. And then looking at some of the projects that were being discussed, a completely separate decision would be how would you use the money? So one is to free it up and the other is to, at some point, once inside, what do we do with it? The second one is the septic plant. At one time, when the septic plant was bleeding cash and there was large concerns that the guaranteeing townships, one of which was Acton, was going to have to bail that out. It appears now that they turned the corner, they've raised the rates. They got the septic located down a bit, but they're actually in, in the black. One year or eight months doesn't make a trend, but it certainly looks very positive. I talked to Dean Botts a bit about it and I realize at the county, he's not going to give us any direction, but he agreed that, one, eight months doesn't make a trend. However, this might be a bit much if we're sitting on it. And I'd like to, when we get to that point in the budget discussion, take a look at bringing that number down by, by some, some amount.
In that, in that number, I believe from Dean, not exactly, but that our proportion of a payment, if we had to contribute again on bonds per year, is someplace around seventy-five hundred to seventy-eight hundred. So Gordy talked about this number, relate that to seventy-eight hundred, divide by how many years' worth of money if we had to pay the bonds we'd have. On the other side of that, this year, we did get two interest payments and money back on what we loaned them originally.
Right.
So that's just another piece of data we can look at.
You know, these things were sent in motion at a time when it made sense to put them in motion, but I think it's worth taking, worth taking another look at it. And then last but not least, to kind of cushion that a bit, they get out one, one month doesn't make the trend. But the unrestricted balance, I mean, it's, it's extremely favorable. And to the point, I, I wouldn't even look at the balance sheet and it ties to it. So, so we appear to be in good position. And it might be time to consider freezing the cash up, the fund, what survey says people are interested in doing through the township. So that's kind of my, my comment on it. I think there's some money we can put to better use.
This, to me, also ties into our previous discussion about tribal grants. Because you might, you might say, well, you know, we've got, we've got metro funds we can use for roads and stuff. But rather than ask for a grant, use our money for that and go after grants for parks and other things. Our citizens have said, we'd like you to not use our money for lots, for parks, not at all, but a lot. So that's another way to balance between the two.
I, I agree. Clearly, if we knew the scoring mechanism of the tribe, we had two projects and one we knew for, somehow we knew would be viewed more favorably, we should run that one in and perhaps fund the other one from some of this money. That's something we should go into some detail at the, at the budget meeting.
One, one thing, I'm not sure exactly what the cutoff was, but just so you know, the six-month operating reserves tied directly to our bond rating. And that's why we put it at six months. Now, if that bond rating goes up or down at three months, not six months, then I would be open to hear discussion of spending that money elsewhere. But if that bond rating is the six-month cut, you drop your bond rating, then any money we do have to borrow is going to be a lot more interest, obviously. So I would, that would be something that I would need to hear.
Perhaps Jay, you can, I don't, one of the things we're looking at bonding going ahead, what, what potential bond you were looking at. And I've always thought we would use, we would go through the county on that as opposed to going through the township. They regularly do that and go on their credit, which is better than our credit. You get a better rate. But that's something we'd have to get a, take a, a look at.
I also believe that six-month reserve, I remember how this was set, the dollar value was set, it has something to do with our run rate on expenses. And it's, was it a percent of that or something? There's some formula that drives that number. We just didn't pick a number and put it there.
It's six months. I mean, they just said what's.
Of expenses.
Six months of expenses is what it is. Most, the recommendation from the auditors is anywhere from three to six months, four months. You know, I'm not saying to bleed the whole thing back to nothing, but even for several years, we've been sitting on some cash.
And I'm not implying that at all. I'm just implying it had something to do with it.
No, I, I remember that. And at the end, when they were going for the shoreline.
Yeah, I know it affected the bond rating somehow and it was a bond that we had to look into more than running through the county.
And so I would want to make sure that we don't affect that.
We need to be able to. Any more discussion on this? Gordy, otherwise?
No, the only thing to beat off of what Gordy said, he did ask me to get some stuff together that when we discuss this, I'll hopefully have that on the revenue side. I pulled some of that information already, but I don't have it all.
I do understand why it makes sense to. By the way, this, I handed out in our next meeting, we're going to try to have with Amy's help and Cab's money, an actual resolution. have with Amy's Health and Cav's, an actual resolution like this, to go into June, to the year end, so we have this as a resolution. And, and it's, it's very important to do that for tracking purposes, to remember where we said we're gonna put money. Many times, people say, oh, I said that, but then we don't find the documentation to say what was. So this is a very well documented kind of process, okay? Gordy, anything else on that?
Nope.
Okay. The next item is the Hoxsey House key dates. I'll start out on this. I think, Dave, you're gonna, in a minute, be up here, right? Why don't you move on up so we can see you? This, this is an activity that's going, going on for quite a while. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
You know, Acme originally had a commitment to the DNR, that they would have that house off of the site, when the DNR gave us money to buy that site in 90 days. That was in all, originally, in all, in all Woodpopping, we call it the Hoxsey House. It is, uh, from the ancestry of Leonard Hoxsey, I believe. And the DNR agreed, uh, back in July 2012, to give us an extension on that, because they realized there was work had to be done, people were working on this project. And that was till the end of June of this year. So that's the, so we had an extension already. The township has an agreement with the Acme Heritage Society, signed on 9/27/2012, for the house to close between us and them, and for them to get moved appropriately by this end date. A meeting was hosted by the township on 3/20, Dave was there, other members, a lot of utility people, permit people, and to review where we were at, and actions to be checked on by the Acme Heritage Society, and Dave kind of led that up, and has been leading that up. That brings us to the night, we've asked Dave to come and talk to us about the status, where he's at, what's going on, what dates can we meet, we're real close, uh, are they in jeopardy, or aren't they? We've had a pretty tough winter. And then, what, what funds are available, complete move, to the move? So I'm gonna leave, from this point, Dave, to you.
Okay. Thanks for letting me be here. As you know, we've been working on this really hard. It's, uh, I wish my great-great-grandfather would have built on the other side of the road. But anyways. Dorothy got me into this two years ago, and, and it's been an interesting, interesting travel. We have been in contact with the DNR, the DNR knows about the situation to date, they are willing to work with us a little bit longer, and, uh, I was prepared at this point that our fundraising efforts are still moving forward, but we're still, we're still needing money to perform this. And, uh, I wanted to ask the board if they would consider maybe 60 days for a yes/no date, because some things have changed today. And it won't affect, the, the Acme, or the Acme Heritage Society never wanted to ever jeopardize the, the parks and recs grant policies, we, we, we had that from day one, if we were gonna be in the way of that, that we would not pursue this project. Well, we have talked to the DNR, the DNR understands our situation, they said that they would work with us, because of the weather and what, all the things that have happened. So my question to you guys, could you possibly give us 60 more days to answer some more questions, or to get some more questions answered on our standpoint, and we still wouldn't jeopardize your grant process?
If you don't mind, I'll add to that a little bit. The DNR called me about this, one thing they did say, if we extend the date of the present date we have, they will put jeopardy points on our grants.
Correct.
Right? So I wanna make sure it's, Dave and I've talked about this, this is my big secret. They said, however, if we make a second date...
They would remove those?
They would take them off before they actually review them for final grant approval. That was stated by the, we've got Lady Kristi...
Mayes.
Mayes, that handles those grants. So she called me personally and asked that.
Could you clarify that, or say that again, please? I, I just wanna make sure I understood what you said.
If, if we would ask for an extension, and we would ask, there's a process we had to go through.
Right.
Acme has to ask for it, not to Heritage Society.
Right.
Okay? They have to provide us data. If we do that, they will put points on the two grants we have applications in today. Whether we think jeopardize, that's what I, that's what they call points, they give you points against your grant. If we make the date we're asking for, and I'm gonna ask Dave what you're asking for, to say what it is, but I think it's...
Well, the DNR said October 1st.
Okay.
I'm not...
No later than October 1st, which means it has to be out earlier than that...
Right.
To do appropriate...
We, we're not asking for that date particularly, we're asking for us to be able to do some more legwork, to come up with some more money, to pull this project off, and we believe that we can do this.
So if, if that, we as a board say, we'd like to help get that extension, because we're the ones that have to apply for it, they put the, they put the points on it. If we deliver on what we said we'd do, the points will come off before they look at the grants for final approval.
Correct.
And that's what you had confirmed also, right? Because this is not something new, uh, this is it. I also, um, also know, when I looked at at least what was in the record eagle, and we all know how that is about what's in the paper, but I believe the gentleman that's the head of the DNR, and I forget how you pronounce his name, but he's Kristi's boss, said, but we need a documented plan from you guys, if you're gonna do that, they wouldn't even consider what we're asking unless you have a documented, detailed plan and location.
And we can provide that.
That opens a conversation, that, does that help Paul, what I'm saying on it?
Yeah, the, the, my, my concern is, we add the points, the final review date is after the end date for the house, so that those points would come back off.
Yes.
So I mean, they're there.
If we need to commit...
Right, then, and, and back off, so it doesn't...
Well, we gotta get to more talk on that in the end, I wanna hear more of it. Gordy?
Just some clarification on this, they put, they're sitting on, we've got our grant request before them, they're sitting on it, and they're gonna put negative points on it, but they're not gonna review our grant while it has some negative points on it.
No, let me say it a different way.
Yeah.
They, they are already reviewing our grants, because they've come back to me on a couple things they wanted an adjustment on, which we did, not on the, not on the boat launch, but the other. So they'll review them at the, what I call the staff level. It's the final review doesn't happen till after October 1st. So, they'll put them on there, if we ask for a grant, but the, but if it's off by October 1, if that's the date we're asking for, then the final review by what I call a review committee, not the staff committee, the review committee, would, would look at them, if points off, then they'll look at them. They'll look at them if the points aren't off. Either way, they have to, they'll look at them. But the points could go against us.
If it was looked at before, or if it wasn't met?
If it wasn't met.
When they look at these grant applications, if, I'm putting it in the way that, I know that it deals with... They put a point system on it, and if, if it's a point system up to 100 or whatever, they give you X amount, and then at the end, when the final review is, you get, you got 90, 90 points, you're up, but because of these here two things, we gotta subtract...
X number of points, whatever it is.
Whatever the points is, and that's basically what it is.
Okay, okay.
So they look at it, but it, it's a final review process that adds and subtracts the points.
Well, the staff will do that before it goes to the final team. So that whatever, let's say you've got 80 points, or nine, if you said, and they, they negatively put what said, if you don't make this happen, I'm gonna add more or take them off. The final review's gonna decide, if those aren't there, and we had 80, we'll keep 80. But if we don't make the review, we don't make our date, they'll, they'll make us lower on the points, and I think the way they rate points is, the more points you get on a project from, from the rating, the more likelihood if you'll, you have that one through.
Would you like me to clarify? It's a 400-point system?
400, okay.
There's a cutoff that they will set themselves, and then there are bonus points, and because our project is on a water trail, we qualified for 50 extra bonus points. So that actually bumps us up, but because it's so competitive, um, they will actually skip down the point system and fund some of their own projects first at the lower, lower point system, and then come back up to the higher points and see what fits within their matrix that they want to fund.
So losing points could be a big issue to us.
It could be a very big issue. And does that, I'm sorry, can I just clarify, does it only applies to DNR grant that we put on the south end, or does it apply to the boat launch also?
Well, I believe when you promised to the DNR you're gonna do something, and you don't, I think the DNR probably looks at, but one is in the pink system for the south end, I'm sure of that one. I think the DNR people themselves might look at us as a township and say, hey, we didn't live up to our first commitment, we missed our second date, and now we have a problem with the third date. Could have. So I think they have a mindset about that as people.
Do they give us a date, if they wanna be looking at this?
All she would tell me would be after October 1st.
So, basically, our drop date, dead date of whatever should happen to the, the Hoxsey House, should happen by October 1st.
Has to happen.
My thought was, if we could get those two extra months to do some more fact-funding, raise some more money, we could come back way before that, like August 1st, and say, we're on, or we're not on. And then, you, you wouldn't be jeopardized, correct? Because you could still do your demolition without penalty.
If I have, if decisions made at the right time.
Right.
She, you have a question?
Yes, um, I personally am feeling nervous here, because when I worked behind the scenes last year, and into the beginning of this year, with the DNR Waterways for the Boat Launch, which is the number one wish on the community survey, that, um, I worked with Paul Peterson and others, and I asked him, um, very definitely how the process works. And I've been expecting my phone to ring, because they're supposed to be letting people know now that's the DNR Waterways Boat Launch. My phone hasn't rung, and I don't necessarily want to assume anything, but if this is tied to the Hoxsey House, my phone isn't going to ring on the Boat Launch. And I'm very uncomfortable about that. Now, I don't know that to be the case, but my phone's been very silent, based on the conversations I've had, and how I know the DNR Waterways granting rule works, so...
Can we clarify that with Christine?
It's a different arm of DNR. Waterways and DNR Trust Fund are two different arms, but I, you know...
Because the first, and I told you this, the first thing I talked to the DNR, I said, we do not wanna jeopardize our board and our parks. And, and she was aware of that, and so was Mr. Ray Vander, and they have sensed...
Well, let's talk a little bit about where we're at, and what's our shortfall, and what are the things that are facing us, it's kind of factual. Are we sitting at what percent of money, what are the things?
We have a third of the money to make the move.
Huh?
We have a third of the money to make the move.
Only a third?
Right.
Okay.
Right. There's, there's, it was always the intent of the Heritage Society to, to do this the right way the first time. I've been told to put it out in a vacant field, do it later, we're, we're not gonna embrace that. We're gonna move it, and we're gonna have it set up for the community to enjoy. In other words, the improvements are gonna be done, uh, the new foundation, new basement, it's gonna be up to code, um, and it's gonna be open to the public. And to do that, that's a whole nother, whole nother bunch of money, but to get it off of that site and get it up to the village, it's gonna cost us about $75,000.
When we had, when we had our meeting originally with utilities, we had some commitments on utility parks, we worked on that quite diligently. Now, so we, I'm gonna assume the date we have coming up very shortly is already missed, can't be done.
Right.
I think you kinda agree with that. So what activities do we have that would help us understand, not only money, but what are the activities we have, or things that need to be done in a short enough period, that would tell us as a board, we wanna ask for this, that we know it'll be done? In other words, can utilities meet the commitments? How, how do we deal with the weather issues? You know, all the things that we had to deal with?
The people I've had conversations with think it's a much wiser idea to move this in the fall than it is in the summer. We think it's irresponsible to close down the Town of Acme in, in, in June to do this. Personally, the town's gonna be closed for maybe eight hours, possibly 12 hours.
Let's explain to everybody what that means, because Dave and I have all talked...
The power, the power will be shut off from the baby to Toms, and this road will be closed. The mover can move this in an hour, the utilities have to work separately. Each, they can't get together as a group, one group goes in, they drop everything, we're gonna drive over the power lines, we got these rubber mats, and then the next guy comes in, and he, and it goes right down the line. And the mover has told me, he said, your utility guys are gonna hold this up.
And they told us the power company will go back in and put theirs up first, then Charter, then Merritt, who other they care, right?
Right. Correct.
What, where are we at? We have an issue on this with these motels we've talked about. Have we got commitments that you guys feel have data on, not just verbal, but really commitments out of motel?
I have not personally talked to the owner of, of the American Express, or the Howday Express? Yeah. Jim said that he would talk to the Sleep Inn people, we do actually know the management up there. They didn't seem to think that that was a problem, they have backup generators, I know some other businesses we've talked to. We, we hired an engineer firm to, to do all this for us, we've hired consultants to help us with this, we spent $5,000 on that, and this stuff is all still coming in, so...
So, so do both motels have a generator? I don't know for sure, so...
I don't know that.
So the Sleep Inn has a generator that they can operate under by law?
Apparently.
Or it's just a temporary generator? Jim, you're asking, you got your hand up, so I'll be glad to let you ask that.
I always get the two hotels mixed up, but the one in front, Blake, who's the owner there, they have had generation, or generators out there for backup for certain functions that they've had. And, uh, he indicated to me, just speaking, that it was no problem for them that he would go out and order a generator to come in now. I did go to the hotel and back, and the owner wasn't there, but, uh, he seemed to think there was no problem.
Great. Okay. I realize this is a very emotional issue, but I, if I didn't be my normal abrasive self, I don't know what I would do. Here's the issue I've got with giving an extension, if that's what the board is, you're asking us at the 11th hour to come and ask for an extension, you have two year, I mean, if you just sit back and objectively look at this, you have two years to make this happen, you've got a third of the money, and you really haven't kept the board, who's got the liability of all this, informed. I mean, we've asked you to come, and I understand, and no one wants to come in and say, well, we only have a third of the money, but this is the first time we've, we've been told anything. I mean, single plan of how you can go from a third of the money to 100% of the money in a timeframe, and make all this happen, I mean, I'm sure there's the formal procedure the DNR uses, but with the money they've spent here, this is not just a minor project. I'm sure it's high up there, and, and people talking, whatever, you know, we did this, we missed a date, two years, missed a date, and we're coming back for an extension. We would have really huge ache, I feel, on our face, if we asked for another extension and came back and, and missed it.
Well, that's what I ask you tonight, is I'm saying, we, we're not gonna put you in that situation, because if we have an answer for you August 1st, you still can, you still can deal with it.
Well, we have to ask for an extension now.
Correct. But that would take us to October 1st, and then if we came back and said, we can't do this in August, then you can demo the house, and all bets are off.
But, but our track record with them as a department, they're looking at what's going to Acme, we missed the date, we asked for an extension, a long extension... We missed the date, we asked for an extension, a long extension, and then at the last, at the ninth, you're always better off, if you've got bad news, break it earlier and go to them six months, nine months ahead of time, come to the board beforehand, but that's, that ship has sailed. And to put us under the gun tonight without us seeing or revealing us with any degree of confidence that you'll have an actual plan, I mean, it's a huge, huge leap of faith. And the township is really, life has been over backwards, you know, we, the plan was initially to demolish that building. And everybody was told, when they contributed money, that building was coming down in that initial timeframe. And the actual funding to take the building down probably been covered by conservancy grant monies and donations, et cetera. Now, if we have to take the building down, because you can't move it and fill the hole, we're talking twenty, another twenty-seven thousand or twenty-five thousand dollars out of the kitty, that the taxpayers are gonna have to ante up. So I, I just have, I understand, there's some people with some real huge emotions on us, but you know, coming, I just would have a problem with all the monies that are at risk, what's just been spent. And the eleventh hour, without knowing something, how you get from a third, you know, it's gonna be hard, very hard for me to say, yes, let's go back for a third, third bite of the apple. Hey, Jim?
Dave, I'm struggling with this and I appreciate the emotions and I, I'm looking at facts. And in my mind, a yes from me tonight looks like we are eighty-five percent to our target. We've got this confirmed, this confirmed, this hotel, this hotel, these things in writing. And we have this fifteen percent delta and this is how we're going to do it. Here's our plan. And I don't see that. And I'm, I'm not a betting woman that way. Because the June 30th commitment is a two and a half year extension, if I calculated that correctly, right? From March 6th, 2012 was when it was initially decided by the board at that time to, to move the house. So now you, you get to June 30th. If you were eighty-five percent there, I'd be happy to call my DNR Waterways contact and say, gosh, the board, you know, whatever the decision was. And I, you know, but for me, I think, I feel like it's a wing and a prayer and the luck of the Irish to get there.
I, I have a little bit of a resolution to this and that's that it has to be moved one way or the other. The date we have right now is June 30th. We have a meeting June 3rd. I think that June 3rd, we have in place that they show us they've got more than what they do now, having it moved to where we're comfortable with asking the DNR and being able to say that. Or we have in place what we're gonna do to get people to come in and remove the home. So that we can put something together, put it out and give people adequate time to come in and remove it. I mean, that's even pushing it, twenty-seven days. But I think it fulfills both needs. I think that twenty-seven days is doable if we kind of put out there that if we don't have the plans in place to get it properly moved to our comfort level, if you will, that we have plans in place to get it removed and we can show that to DNR and that they're ready to do that. At least it started, it'll be done.
To go, just one, I think it's, if we can run it up to the wire to the 30th, I don't have a problem with that. I have a problem going beyond that. If, if you said you, it's just two weeks, you're pending, some things are gonna break, it's two weeks, call special marketing, you don't have to wait until June 3rd or whatever the date is. If you are that confident that in two weeks, you can give us something, here's the money, here's the commitment, here's the plan, in something other than just this, I think, I certainly would support calling a special meeting.
Let me back that back just a little for all of us. I believe what the DNR said is, remember, they have a documented plan, they said they would consider. We had to have enough cushion if they consider no versus yes. We all wanna do that to get that house out of there. So I can't, you can't wait till the 30th. It has to be gone by the 30th.
What's your lead time?
And, and I believe our lead time is about two and a half weeks. Time somebody says, I had to do something with that house, I've gotta get all utilities unhooked, capped, permits issued, county code issued permit, tell a contractor, get at it. And I, so I got all that upfront. So to me, you got a three week window minimum. And that means weather and everything works right in your favor on everyone's home. And we have, they haven't, they just said, we will consider this. They didn't say, I'll give it to you. Now, we feel they might get strong. I think Dave's talked to them, so that's, and they have, they came to us and said, we'd like to, but you know, we don't, we can't afford to miss that the first date, okay? Number one. It's not like I can do it. And the other is, when you think of a second date, you had to have, it has to be out by the first week of September because you have the same issue on that end, but it has, the house has to be gone. You move it out and you have a rainy weekend. You move it out and you have a storm and the power company says, I'm not gonna work this weekend. You, you have any other jeopardy that we can't control. I mean, I always look at it, what I can control. If I can't control, Dave can't control. Well, he'd like to someday, right? We can't. I mean, that's where we are. So we had to think of all those things. And if we're gonna ask for, if we're gonna ask for relief from them, we need a documented plan, plan, I think, in less than two weeks with people saying, I sign up, hotel, I sign up, this signs up, power company says, I sign up, whatever it is. They said a documented plan. I don't think the site's an issue. You have people who've committed to give you a site and help work with you. I don't believe that's an issue. You ought to tell me if it is.
Can Steve say something?
If he'd like to, yeah. Well, if you don't want to, you know, after...
Not really.
I wasn't planning on making a speech, man. You know, the Hoxey House moving onto the village, it came about, I was sitting like in that chair right there, didn't even know anything about the Hoxey House. I guess it's been a long time ago, it's a completely different board. I, I respect and understand the concerns that everybody's raising. But there's a lot of things, I mean, obviously the, the money, they don't have enough money, okay? But I, let me go back, like I said, the first night that I said they can move it. Okay, we were delayed. We asked for an extension. We were, we were delayed because it's awful hard to get financing. We made that clear to everybody. It was under Record Eagles, we talked to you guys about it, that's why we needed an extension, you know? So that put things, as far as getting the site ready, that put things back. Okay? So from that standpoint, it wasn't really our fault, but at the same time, we're, you know, we're attuned to it. You know, they haven't raised enough money and, but because I just became aware of this, I mean, honestly, I just became aware where they are financially. And, you know, I guess that's why I'm here tonight to, you know, just to see what's gonna happen, see what's, what's gonna go on. He hasn't, Dave hasn't mentioned, he said he's had some things happen that could change things, okay? Given, you know, when, two years ago, when I thought it was an honorable thing that the people were trying to do. I honestly believe that a museum made out with the oldest structure in Acme is a good thing for everybody that lives in Acme. I don't think there's anybody, I don't think there's any of you guys that don't think that that's a good thing. Okay? But, you know, we had the delay, so we don't have the site ready, number one. We'd have to take it up there and put it someplace and then move it again. Okay? But to, to these guys' credit, they haven't come to, they haven't come to me and said, Steve, are you gonna help us? I'm used to everybody coming and saying, what are you gonna do for, with their hand out? And so was my partner, Jeff Anderson. So I called him today and explained the situation that I've just become aware of. I mean, I've just become aware that they only have a third of the money. But they have over half the money and just what Jeff and I said, we would help them with today. That's really what, why he's, you know, thinking, maybe we can make this work. And I understand what you're saying too, Gordy. I know it's gotta be, you gotta get some things in line. But this is the first that I've actually got involved in this, where I know they need more money. And like I said, you know, you know you're helping the right people when they aren't standing there like this. You know you're helping the people, you say there's a lot of emotion and stuff. You know you're helping the right people when they aren't expecting a handout. That's how I feel about it. And they haven't done that. We, I found out about it, went to Dave, literally today, and said, look, Dave, we, you know, why didn't you say something? Well, you guys already gave us land, you know? Why would we, you know? That's honorable. And I understand everything you guys are saying. But we may be in a short time, seventy, have seventy-five percent of the money. Okay? As far as, you know, it's not just that we, we delayed the, the site being ready because of financing and stuff. If everybody remembers, this is the worst and worst and hardest winter we've ever had. It started early. We didn't get done what we wanted to get done in the fall. Okay? I've, I've pulled, I've come up here three times in the last month thinking they're really gonna be able to jump on it. Okay? I pulled into the site, talked to Steve, there's four Steves involved in that thing. Well, Jay knows. But I said, well, is it drying out? He said, dried out? We're jumping on it tomorrow. Three times in the last month, we're jumping on it tomorrow. And I have all the confidence in the world in Elmer's being able to get the job done. Okay? He said, but they're calling for rain tomorrow. Every single day that I pulled in there and it's dried, dried out enough, we think we can jump out tomorrow, it's rained the next day. You know? There's just a, there's a lot of things that have happened, you know? You know, as far as, and I'm not asking for money. But you know what, what Gordy said about the money that you guys are sitting on makes a lot of sense, as long as, as long as you, you, what, you know, as long as what Paul raised is addressed and you understand it and everything. And I'm not saying you guys give them fifty thousand or something like that. But I'm willing to give them some money and try to see if I can come up with some others in some way. Now, how fast can I do that? I don't know. And I know that, I know Gordy makes a very valid point, okay? I, I really understand that. But this is the first time I've been aware of it and, and have actually will come up with something to help them. If it's not enough, it's not enough. But I guess I'd appreciate, you know, it's like I said, you're helping the right people, you know, and I just think it was honorable, it's honorable of them two years ago, I think it's honorable today. And I think it's, I think it's a, something, if you could have a museum up there, that, you know, for the community to enjoy, I guess I'd go to the wall. Or to, you know, and, and try to work with, with the DNR and, and the last thing he wants to do is jeopardize the township or any grants or anything. But I think the right people, like Jay gets back on the phone with the DNR, talks about it, you know, or whatever, I'd appreciate it. And I really appreciate it on behalf of the Historical Society. So I didn't plan on keep talking that much, but I, I do appreciate where they're coming from. So, having said that, hope you take that into consideration too.
In response, I, I wish the only problem was the site. I, then I would have, if they said you have the cash in hand, it got in the pocket, it's the site, then I say, okay, we could, we're ninety-nine percent, I'm convinced, we can do it, you can make it happen.
But when he, when he said he had about a third of the money, he's got about, he's not counting what I've already told him today, give it. So he's got, so he's got about six percent of the money. And I've got a couple of people to hit up.
Chuck?
Chuck's one of them. No, I mean, I understand what you're saying, Gordy, I'm just, he understated what he had. Because I, the only reason he understated is because I have not given him the money. But the thing, he hasn't said that. But, but the, the other thing, there's other things, there's other things in the work about, about the Hoxey House. There's, there's a guy that's, that's volunteering to, to put the HVAC in, okay? There's four or five families that will do a room, there's twelve rooms, there's four or five families already, and they're, they're families I know, so I know they mean it, that, that are, that are gonna donate money to do a room. The Hoxey, the Hoxey family's one of them. Jim Goss's family's another one. And there's a couple more that, I mean, I know that they are genuinely gonna do that. So there's a lot of things going on if they can, if they can come together. And Gordy, I really do understand what you're saying. But I had half a notion when you said eighty-five percent, I said, I'll just give you some more money and we're at eighty-five percent. But, you know...
And that's what I was, you know...
I understand what you're saying.
How far, how fast?
Yeah, well, well, they're, well, they doubled the money they got in the bank today. They're not counting. So, you know, if I got a little time to work on it, you know, maybe I can do something.
How much is it, when you add up then, how much the rooms are?
Well, but the rooms are, you can't move, you can't...
Rooms are after.
The rooms are after. But I'm saying there's a lot of things and a lot of people out there supporting it. They're gonna help with this thing if we, if we can get the damn thing off, off the bay and up on the property. I have all the confidence in the world that, that we can be ready on the site at that time. And I know that's not the question. But you guys, you guys talk, you're all good people, this is, this is a good board. If you guys can figure something out, you can. If you can't, you can't. Okay? Thank you.
Marcy?
I completely understand the desire to make this work. I would really like to express my concern because we have been working on this boat launch for eight years. Ninety-seven percent of our community wants it. Gina, I don't know if we're comfortable discussing some of the details of how the boat launch possibly could come to fruition earlier and how that could jeopardize this. My main concern is who is gonna stand in front of my committee that's worked on this for the last two years and say that it fell through because the DNR took away points or whatever? And then who is going to motivate my committee, who's always very hard to motivate as it is, to continue working to redo those grants when they have to come to fruition again if we don't make the deadlines or they still look at us?
I understand all of that. I came here tonight to tell you guys we were through. And he came, just like he said. And I believe every word he says. And the person that he's gonna talk to next is a very, very influential person that...
If, if you were to get the money, would you be able to meet the deadline with the power utility companies? On the 30th?
Not because, because of the site won't be ready.
Okay. But I mean, the, if we got the extension, if we got the extension...
Oh, October? Oh, yeah.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah. And I, and I, and I can't, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna do our best, but I mean, on the, on the site, we'll be ready.
Yeah.
We'll be ready.
But the utilities is what my concern is. Because obviously it's not call them up tomorrow, they take them down.
Right, right.
I mean, that's something you gotta know.
Thirty days ahead of time. They told us that, David, right in the meeting.
Right.
They've gotta schedule people, it's a normal procedure for any company that does this work, mover has to schedule.
So if we, if we were to do a special meeting on the 30th of this month, the last Friday of this month, to have enough information to come from comfortably, show the DNR we have things in place, or to get the information together to get demolition together, if you wanna put it that way. So then on the, on, well, we'd have to do two special meets unless we did it earlier than that.
I don't know if we can answer that till I hear when the facts can be put together by the Harris thing. They've gotta put a plan in front of us of what that, what they're doing, what they've done.
But we need, but we, we need to put a date on it because I, I need to be comfortable that it's not gonna be like it is tonight, unfortunately, where they, they've got new information. But I need to say, we need every bit of information by X day.
That's applying the same principle. They've gotta come to us and say, we've done all these things, here's documentation, not documentation. Because DNR said, I want documentation. Then we take, and we as a board say, we wanna support that. This would be what I'd say.
What the DNR wants documentation on is the property.
No, he said more than property. He wants a plan.
I understand that. But they want from, they wanna see where that's going.
Well, that's another piece of, that's right. And, and I think that's not a problem the way I... And I think that's not a problem the way I...
No, it's not. I don't know about drafting up a deed, I don't...
No, that's not what they're asking. They're saying, "Where's it going to go?" They're not, they're not doing that. They want to know then, when you're going to go there, what is your plan? You have a mover in place, the power company's committed, all the things that we talked about before with leases covered, all the things...
We've been talking to utilities since January.
Right. But they want to document it from you all, what that is, what you've done. Once we know that, if we want a sudden meeting, if that's one of our ways to go, we need to know that, so we can get it to DNR in time for them to look at it. And if they come back, because if they come back and say, "Township, I don't want to do that," we need at least three weeks. So we've got to get it to the DNR in time to do our piece.
Okay, so I guess the question is, you need three-week lead time, working backwards from June 30th, three weeks back, the first week of, of June, can you get a commitment from them? Sounds like you have to get a commitment from them, saying, "Within a one week's time, from the time we submit the request..."
Whatever we submit.
Because the last thing they want to do is, "Go ahead," and then we're in the third week, and then they say, "No, we're not going to approve it." Then we've, we've screwed up, we can't get it down in time.
And that's why I need to know, when we have the date in our hand, I can call them and ask them. That's an easy thing to do.
Give, give him the actual date. If we're going to have a board meeting, Paul said, say, "We're going to have a board meeting on this date, at this time, the board first has to see the plan." It's fine, the DNR has to see the plan.
Well, I agree.
I want to see the plan.
I agree.
And then if we see that there's, you're, damn near at a hundred percent committed, and you've done all these other things, and the estimate looks good, on and on and on, then we...
Ask the DNR.
We ask the DNR, and we ask for their response on, you know, within five days. And if they say, I guess if they come back, and I suspect they'd say, "Okay, we'll do it in five days."
I think Dave and my response to what they might say is probably a better chance they would approve than not approve. Do you think they, with a documented plan?
Right.
They've been pretty handy, Kenny, with it.
At what timeframe?
Huh?
At what timeframe?
October 30th.
They're going to tell us if they approve?
Or October 1st. At what timeframe are they going, do they need to look at the plan and say, "Okay" or no?
That, that would be a question we'd have to ask.
I'd ask them, but I, I don't think you're talking about much more than, at the most a week. I got to get to days.
It can't be go more than...
So if we go back...
There's no time.
So if we go back in the calendar, three weeks to get it done would be the ninth. They would have, we would have to have...
Did they approve it?
A place and have things working out. A week prior to that, we'd have to ask something to the DNR.
It's a ninth lead.
The ninth is, is Monday, is a Monday.
No, no, how many weeks till the end of that month?
Three.
Okay. And that's the minimum.
One, two, three full weeks is the ninth. A week from that is the second, okay? So if we go even to the, the 27th, that would be a week prior to that, we ask for whatever to forward to the DNR. Well, I'm saying the 30th. If we were to go to the 30th and say, "On the 30th, show us that you've got more things in place that we're comfortable telling the DNR, 'Hey, we got this, this, this in place,'" we give us the extension. That gives them a week. Realistically, they could have an answer for us by our meeting on the 3rd. If not, we would have to set a special meeting, because that gives them a weekend and two days to look at it, if we had it to them by the 3rd.
Dave?
Here.
Genema?
Here.
Point?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
White?[1789.52]